Good morning, everyone. And Merry Christmas. Each one of the 70 regular sessions, if I call for a start date, my request will be denied. And I'd like to request the local dialogue for the introduction. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Another one does it here. Another one, Mr. Doydoy. 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 And another one, Mr. Doydoy.
Mr. Doydoy. Do you have some questions?
Ah, okay.
Do you have some questions?
Okay, uh, President.
Hey, I'm Mr. Doydoy. Uh, this is the date. My first is this, uh, chamber. Mr. Doydoy, or Chair of the Executive Committee, Mr. Doydoy. Can we proceed with the adoption of your address? Uh, good morning, each and every one.
Uh, just for more for the global action of the, uh, this for the day.
Second.
Just a question. Just in the second discussion. And from the event, that's the texture. You're not the most sensitive.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have something specific to say. I don't see there anyone. Right, I have got to sit in this seat here. And we proceed with the next item of the Christmas for the day. We have the further for the visiting charge.
Okay, so privilege and shower. I would like to have a little overview of the start from the normal angle. I'd like to say of this Christmas. I, I, it's a great performance of Christmas. Uh, just to greet all the Christmas, Merry Christmas, and of course, flowers and cheer. Uh, my fourth, uh, my great, that I can be, because when I say sad, I'm not a man who that's what I said.
Oh. Um, thank God. Probably, ah, the number, um, complete the, not a question. Uh, love. Another part of the permission. Uh, that I found that I permission, uh, before we have activities about capability due to enhancements, uh, Republic of Institute of the One and the two and three, together with, uh, uh, province, uh, internal office, uh, um, see that. So they, and then we are, uh, I think by, uh, I think, uh, you know, okay, uh, meal or I think, uh, but meal, I think, uh, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, so I know the question, so I think, yeah, so for my, uh, justice, I mean, you, for our, uh, of, of, like, in the money. So, that's right. They, uh, might take an opportunity at the end of the year. At least, um, still take barangay, but in a certain way, with a name. So opportunity, it takes, it hardly an opportunity. So we are invited, uh, still take barangay captain and barangay item art together with, uh, one different counter, there's almost, uh, less than with the, uh, banana participant. So, according to the, for a, not a time, I think, I'm gonna say, and, uh, we, we, we like to about, uh, from, uh, movement impact with spending.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, your honor, uh, good morning, my member colleagues. Just, uh, a little concern, Mr. Chair, about me, I know, Mr. Chair, uh, the when will be the award? Our exact date of transfer to our new municipal building? Because this has been dragging for quite a long time already, you know? And, uh, if the chair could not also make, uh, an answer that because he is also left in the dark as to when, me, I move you, Mr. Chair, at this concern, to refer to committee on infra. So that the same committee will call the attention of the contractor himself. In several instances, the contractor feel to appear despite of several limitations, Mr. Chair. And that perhaps, uh, on the committee level, contractor would highly appear, Mr. Chair, uh, so that we will know from, uh, direct from him personally or from the contractor, when will be really the, the last date, Mr. Chair, because, you know, uh, I do not think we are charging the contractor of the, the, the delays, uh, in court by contractor until, until this time. Well, I'm not a man at one stall, in stall, also. And that's another thing is, ang status will follow, so, I don't know. So before Christmas, you go, mo, mo, ma, ma, dresses, that, well, we can, after the session, we can visit the the new municipal building, so that we can have a direct, yeah, personal knowledge about the status of our building, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next, uh, honorable Catalonia.
Good morning, everyone. Um, I would like to greet our, uh, my colleague and our assistant staff and secretary. Uh, Merry Christmas and a happy new year. I'd like to thank you all for your, uh, for the courage, the service you made this 2021. We hope that we double it in 2022. Uh, I would like to know, uh, I am hoping, I am hoping that you will have a simple gathering, uh, to also, uh, I don't want to, if I gather, I want, my staff and secretary, a simple gathering would be nice. I think that would be okay.
Honorable, that's right. So, concerned, at the floor, uh, concerned, or, 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 after the session, because, uh, if, after, once, I have to decide a reason. Yeah, I go to the side, yeah. You go to the side, yeah. After the session, after lunch.
Sige, Mr. Chair, much more, Mr. Chair, but the, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good, no? It will be, we know that we're going to go that far.
Because we can't go, uh, see an actual, uh, accomplishment. After that, I am a transparent man, I can do, uh, uh, uh,
We'll, as well invite the, 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 yeah. The, 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 the.
Because, uh, I'm not a, it's, I'm not a, my family, so, I'm not a, my family.
Ah, what made it a huge amount? About fifty thousand pesos covering the first batch. Second, fifty thousand pesos plus. Second batch, uh, forty-two thousand. Third batch, forty-seven thousand. Fifty would... How many is only one person that's going to receive this one, this morale?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Atong ngayon is kailangan sa testa sa two, I think. And they have a niyakamuk almost a million for this. Percento ni sa poila ang trino na puhihay. Per box, a coolin'.
So, how many trainers?
Isa ni sa...
What will be this very huge amount?
Uh, quality sa kanang nakalatad, nakalatad na rin daan sa percentage sa testang ruling na unang aduwa't.
Do we have document for this to support on this? Because I'm, I'm, I'm surprised what made this amount. How much per hour would they're going to pay for the trainer?
Uh, I think it is, uh, fifteen percent from the total amount per box. That could be in the water.
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, I, I just would like to ask for the documents, Mr. Chair. So that we'll be guided also, be guided upon. Or and be qualified on what may this amount be used uh, to be given for the trainer and...
Presenting some of it.
Okay, so that is why I, I need local, Mr. Chair, just for the record.
After approval, I will give the documents to the board. So, okay, more discussion, sir. More discussion? And after, after Mr. Chair. Kung di naman pandemic kaunang tabo sa kataas na kay sa lihat ang mga presyo sa testa sa presto din, gumaya rin nila na hinga mo sa tunggong sipyo. Tulung lang yani ka ba, number three, number four?
Yeah, English, Mr. Chair, but I, I could not, uh, I was understand that the rationale, why? When there are also schools that are, uh, receiving mga nagko, kayo mga, what, mga income pero ako, as a teacher, na daw ako pinanagyo hour, pinanamosi. Kita nagwa kayo, kayo, mga, mga misdaan ano eh, usah kayo.
Kaya, kaya ako at ako po, okay? More discussion? Object? Do you not have more session, sir?
Fifteen percent, yo?
Thank you, sir.
So, memo na siya, this one, uh, one, two, three, four. What, gumayro po sila, magitan po sila? Ano 's'to, pagitan, three parts?
Okay.
Gumayon po rin po sila, sir, sir.
Ah, anyway, anyway, you just give the testification because we have done this several years, I know. May naman isana natin ang mga tuwip. Mga video para the trainer.
This is what it is.
I think it was explained.
Yeah, so, sa, sa...
I have the floor. But I can say, naano ko na sila guidelines, na two one, ang testa mo, na one, na one, na two, help. As I said, the first time, I have had, had morale, and so, for the first time, I have experienced based on guidelines. Okay, so, we are now in the committee report.
And, and Mr. Chair, and relating, uh, relating to the revelation of honorable Chair, one value. And who approved the, those, those, there was no audit observation about?
There is no, there is no audit observation. Because every year, COA is giving us the audit observation. And, uh, there is no question about.
And that, Mr. Chair, na daku lang isan ang kay, daku ng presto na sam, bias testa? More than double ng lihat na ganun, pandemic time? Muna talaga magyaha, magyaha, share ako kayo. Uh, usually, naranas pinti tapin, kung niyagi, di ba, sir?
Sila, kasi nila bises, ano, kung may mga karetna, mga loputan na, no, eh.
Kesa, eh, na, na, po, ni Nobol Garcia. Nobol Arco.
What is it, eh?
Nobol Lual. Committee report. No?
No, 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 no. No report?
Nobol Chao. Di ba, eh?
I have one here, Honorable Chair, the committee on application, committee report number three, nine, eight. Subject is supplemental budget. Number one, calendar year twenty twenty-one of barangay Timalang. The amount of sixty-nine thousand seven, seven, forty-nine thousand pesos and barangay Epi Heights. The amount of eighty thousand three hundred fifty-eight and seventy thousand pesos. And supplemental budget number two for calendar year twenty twenty-one of barangay Ituwan, the amount of one hundred thirty thousand. The remarks and commendation of the committee, Honorable Chair, to which was referred the supplemental budget number one, calendar year twenty twenty-one, barangay Timalang, and barangay Epi Heights. And supplemental budget number two of barangay Ituwan, this municipality for review and evaluation and approval. Supplemental budget number one and supplemental budget number two has been referred to Local Finance Committee through Municipal Budget Officer for Technical Review and preliminary review. And after the review, it is shared by the Court of Therapy in its entirety effective upon its approval. Subject to the posted requirements under section fifty-nine of Republic Act seventy-one sixty and further subject to the conditions cited in the Local Finance Committee Review. In implementation of its budget, the LGU must accept and adhere to the fundamental principles enumerated in section zero five of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with the provision of law. With this, the committee hereby comments for its approval, provided that the compliance within the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of implementing barangay government using these standard guidelines, procedures, and the budget execution based principle under budget civil service laws, validating, accounting, and auditing rules and regulations. This, I move for the adoption of the committee report, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, thank you, for the acceptance of the committee report. Got it by number one?
Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution declaring in full force and effect is supplemental budget number one, calendar year twenty twenty-one of barangay Timalang and barangay Epi Heights. And supplemental budget number two for calendar year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one of barangay Ituwan. I so move, Honorable Chair.
Second, second, object, sir? Object, 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 sir? Do you not have more session, sir?
That's all, Honorable Chair.
Next, Honorable, katalon.
Um, not yet, I... Na isa ka, kunti, referal sa kuwas, kuninang parehas. I, I respect with the, with the reason of the sir. Because I don't understand if, if it's for approval or for sponsorship. Um, ako, ako ala siya, i-update later.
Okay, so, honorable pa lang?
Um, there was a referral to my committee, however, I was not able to call for a committee meeting, so there's no report for this.
Thank you. I do not have also anything in the report, sir. Uh, I called for a committee meeting, several sessions, but I first of all, so, do not have any capo, 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 capo. So, I do not have this twenty-five, and we take the report. A little bit, sir. To see to the next.
Thank you, Madam Chief.
Give the feedback to the business for the day's second reading. Item A, an ordinance relating draw cooperation within one hundred meters from jail facilities, providing penalties for violations thereof and for other processes. Item B, an ordinance granting five hundred pesos as a birthday gift to all registered senior citizens of the municipality of Epi Heights.
Uh, maybe have it, uh, one hundred, yeah? Think what's the texture of the...
Yes, I will give my sponsorship speech.
And then, next, Chair?
No, okay, na lang nila, but it's an urgent matter, di ba?
Naki-dipintan?
Wala, wala.
Second reading is here.
Do you have a, do you have a, do you deny? Uy, geta, pag-ganayan ako, no?
Of course, do ganayan. So, ano 'yung mic?
Isa pa, tito.
Ano nga, party, di ba?
Eh, 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 napako.
Okay. Kanyang, pan...
Ano na lang, antamo na lang.
Kili mo nga na, di ba?
Um...
Kili mo nga na? Kili mo nga na?
Hindi, isa di mo gano'n. Hindi?
Wala, may report.
Prison or correctional facility used to just have to worry about what went on behind the facility's walls. These days, they also have to keep an eye what's coming over them. Drones sightings near prisons have become a growing problem around the country as these unmanned aircraft have swelled in popularity and become less expensive to buy. Hello. Jail officers across the nation have learned, in some cases, the hard way, that these remote control devices capable of carrying cargo are being dispatched to smuggle contraband to inmates. Having visited by no less than our DJMP officers headed by our new jail warden, Senior Inspector Arvin Dan Adito, Women Jail Warden, naate ba ko, and Senior Jail Officer, Romel Torres, during our one hundred eleventh regular session, they were grateful to the LGU of Epi for the support and help given to the prisons deprived of liberty and its facilities. They also brought their concern as regards drones used as a tool for gathering information via recording or photographs, transporting illegal drugs, deadly weapons, and other contrabands, as well as surveillance of jail facilities and premises which could very well compromise the safety and security despite the fact that it can also be used for surveying disaster relief. But oftentimes, it is tainted with the commission of terroristic activities. Local legislation is required to regulate and impose restrictions and stop the modus operandi of some lawless elements in the proliferation of their unlawful acts, most especially now that our jail, Epi jail facility is a four-story building with forty cells in it. This proposed ordinance answers the many concerns of our jail officers in keeping safe and secure the health, peace, and order of our correctional facilities, the PBL, and the community as a whole. May this August body of the Sangguniyan Bayan of Epi support this policy. Thank you. I am now open for any question. I believe that, um, na review na 'yung inyo, no? For, for how, kila na ka, weeks, ni la bayi, and, um, I welcome questions now. Instead going, we say, bitan, so, instead of going through each.
May I let me record that? Please, ako ipapunta, na, 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 na. Hindi na lang. Cake by cake.
Makuha ka sa tingin.
Cake by cake, na, na, na. Attachment.
Mungay na, na, one. Mungay, na, na.
Naginabi, naginabi. Question, is that? Okay, uh, we can, uh... And so, there's no question, Honorable Chair. Very, okay, na, very, very good, it was explained by the, yeah, Chief of Police. Yeah. Okay, any further questions of the committee? So, only drone?
Drone.
Only drone?
Drone.
Yes. There are other gadgets relating to ni, 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 na?
Specific lang sa, sa drone. Uh, and... Oh, gano'n ka ma.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
May mga part?
Eh, ako lang ino't sa inyo ang, uh, i- emphasize na sa inyo ang, ang implementing body is sila, drone. Ilahaman ng jurisdiction, sila, sila maghasson sa kuwas LGU, but the coordination is then, nakaplaat siya taro paunsa, uh, implementing rules and regulations.
And drone, but na picture, ano, eh, eh, eh?
Eh, eh.
Okay, then, or, so, any other questions? Object?
Do you not, no, sir?
You have a book for second reading?
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Sir, for dinner? May you move for the third reading for the third and final reading on the next night? I have done this, the third, the final reading.
So, second reading?
Ba't na, atsya, la? May I ask?
Has been moved and delivered for third and final reading? Any, for, any discussion, objection, he not the motion, sir? Certainly, for third and final reading on the next night?
Thank you. Makuha ka sa tingin, ba?
The component can move for reconsideration because, uh, this is very important. As soon as it's made, this ordinance, and I cannot, uh, I am not sure that we have full access on, on this. So, the component can move for reconsideration of votes fast on this matter so that we can approve this.
Yes, ah, yes, more the more concerned, kaya, kung pwedeng ta, uh, on the other matters, pwede ba siya na tumalay consider for...
Is that the motion for reconsideration?
Yes.
Is that the motion?
Exactly. Check, check, do you not the motion?
Thank you.
Um, such as one of the questions, Mr. Chair, what's this, uh, ordinance really, really referring to? Was shown to the Chief of Police? Uh...
Did he Chief of Police, the DJMP Warden?
Uh, so that, uh, as soon as I, I know, oh.
Sa isko, na, na, na. Yes, sa, na, na, na.
Drop, sagi na, na.
Ano din, na, na, na?
Uy, ako'y nag-iwan, no? Ano na, nagkisi, ko, ko, yun lang, drop.
Honorable Chair, I do not have the, the wait for the second, upon the other. It's very tricky, na.
Okay.
So, for sure, to treat this as a very urgent...
I move for the urgency.
I move for the urgency, hello?
Hello. I move for the urgency of this ordinance.
There's the motion. It's a very consideration, as already approved. There's a motion that we have to take this as a very urgent matter because this, uh, I think to do with people, okay?
Any more, any discussion for this matter to be treated as an urgent matter? Check, check? You have the motion, Mr. Chair?
I move the discussion, we confirm this, to committee, sir?
No, there's no need.
No need? No need, yeah?
Yeah, just, just, it's approved. I, urgency, can be, uh, can be, what you put, uh, whether Honorable Mayor and another, uh, way to treat certain matters as very urgent, if body. It's under our...
We cannot, Mr. Chair, we cannot approve, uh, two readings in a single session. Maliban na lang kung ako'y convert into the committee, the whole this body. Naginasa balaw, di na pwede ka approve two readings in one session? Uh, Mr. Chair, before, first, uh, just, 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 sir?
We can, we can approve any measure without passing first, second, third reading. If it is declared by the, by the Honorable Mayor and approved by this body.
Without converting, unless, but, the value to it, to it, to it?
That's why I said, we can approve any measure without passing first, second, third reading. Converting this body into legal rules, you know?
Can you see, can you see, that's your internal rules?
Section two, rules. Second reading, na, na? Approve it in the second reading. We believe it's very urgent. Third, final reading.
Discussion? Any objection? You have the motion, sir? Please, try to convert to...
I move to, I move for the approval, um, on the third and final reading of the ordinance entitled...
The basis founded on, uh, that can be found also in due reassess that the Philippine Constitution also declares that it is the duty of the family to take care of elderly members while they stay to design programs of social security for them. And the third, second, Mr. Chair, is that the municipality values the contribution of the elders initial building, and they have become building blocks in the land of municipality development, Mr. Chair. Uh, and of course, Mr. Chair, this could be a very good Christmas gift to our elderly persons, especially those who are sixty and above, especially to be able to celebrate the Christmas, Mr. Chair. And, uh, because of that, I am also humbly request the, the approval of this change birth. And of course, whatever may be the, the suggestion for the amendment, proposed amendment, I would gladly accept, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's, uh, the fourth of, for, any question, and the reasons of the ordinance for the having issue?
Yeah, just, okay, okay, na, yeah.
Good.
Chair, this should, uh, first, uh, first, uh? Uh, to ask the senior, Honorable Chair? The, uh, Honorable Chair, we have to, we have to, so, uh, because, uh, typically, after the approval of the signature, we expect that, we expecting this month of December, there will be so many, any citizens who will be in the event. So what is this about? I remember before, when we went to Makati, Makati, and give us, senior citizen during the birthday, a cake, cake, cast, cast, uh, with the, with, free of going to movies. But I presented this call, the local community, the local community, they say, we prepare as close as United Nations, because there are so many United Nations, who have not received still until now, social pension, who are not receiving a half a year of social pension. So, so, and now there comes the ordinance for the family, uh, giving five hundred?
Five hundred.
Every birthday, so those who are receiving social pension, will be receiving also five hundred. But those who are not receiving social pension, in danger, particularly Islam, who are not allowed to have, they are in danger, will also receive.
Well, Mr. Chair, just. Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, sorry.
One day this celebration and, and ordinance, the honorable Samuel, all senior citizens register.
Register.
To say, him goes a question.
Okay.
We have received the five hundred, signed up, celebration, then, uh.
Let's go.
Okay. So.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, we have, based on the data that we gathered, we have two thousand nine hundred ninety-two social pensioners that receive regular pension. Those are, those pensioners that I would like understand that are not receiving also SSS and GIS, uh, pensions. Now, if only to really, uh, look for funds that might sufficiently also, uh, answer the, the funds that we need, if this ordinance would be approved and subsequently implemented upon, I, we can, we can probably also exclude this, this two thousand nine hundred ninety-two, uh, senior pensioners under this, this. Now, just, just, just to communicate, ang ato nga apprehension of work would, would, uh, do we get the funds for this? Now, please take notice that TPI, municipal TPI has, uh, has this kind also of ordinance. I got the information that honorable King Poras, that the, the, they have already three million appropriated to fund for this, uh, purpose, is similar to this ordinance, Mr. Chair. So I don't think any reason for us to also, we cannot also be able to provide funds, or look for funds and provide for, and, uh, provide for, for this ordinance to be implemented, so that our senior citizens that are also in danger of medicines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Uh, your ordinance will include, uh, those senior citizens who are also receiving SSS?
Well, if that will, that will, no, it's not, it's not. So, but again, my proposal is that if, just only to count the possible expenses, uh, or the, the, the budget are going to, to import for implementation of this ordinance, we will exclude the two thousand nine hundred ninety-two, just, uh, para, para, pero, if the valuable wishes to also include all those to, uh, register, that's, that would be better in addition. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, may I? Yes, um, na isgutan magustuhan sa, sa City of Makati, um, but, uh, saniya nga nagkuwyo pa ko dito, ang maiyasa, kong ibuyan, senior citizen, na adud ko pang birthday niya, itagaan siya money at the same time, uh, it from Makati government. Uh, ang ilaha na is regardless of, ganang status ni mo, pagka angalan na senior citizen ka, hatagan ka o birthday gifts. So, it would be unfair para na ko nga selected lang ang ato, uh, mahatagan sa birthday gift sa, according sa ordinance, ano eh, no, sa ato ang, sa pros ordinance, the honorable Samuel. Um, birthday gift magusha.
Yeah, it's a birthday gift, but, uh, this is a supplemental measure, so those who are not actually receiving regular pension coming from those, uh.
So you mean, ang inguha purpose ordinance is katulang mga wala kadawat, or would you like it?
The proposal is silent about that, but if, 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 uh, just like what I am trying to emphasize, kung dunay problema sa budget, if you are trying also make some, uh, proposed amendments, so I would like to add that, because at least na lang, naaargay magkadawat o sa kuwan.
For me, uh, for me, I favor this ordinance, ang ako lang, if it is silent, ang interpretation sa tao and during review on the sanggunian is usaan black and white. So, para na ko, if we are to approve this.
But, uh, but, uh, those who are just registered, under.
Yes, of course, yes, of course.
If those, uh, mga bata, mga senior citizens, na paresto mo sila, sila about that, right?
Yes, so, wala ka ba lo, okay, these days, inahanglan man, bigka ma-recognize ka na senior citizen ka, in order for you to avail sa services sa government. So again, regardless of, sa agonimo sa lipunan, no, is, you, you can avail.
No, the requirement of the ordinance is those who are registered.
Yes, is no gana.
If, if, if Mr. Akri is registered, then we can do.
Siya yun, ako, eh, ako punto ba, ay, point nito, itaw mo registered, di ba registered? Wala ba't question sa registered, marami ko ba, kung regardless ay kung estado sa lipunan, maka avail ka, kung registered, okay, okay, paminasa ko. Karoon, uh, ang atwa is, kung, kung atuwaning, uh, kung atuwanin siyang, uh, kung una-una na to, no, musting doon, nadili selective, nadili lang ka to na kadawat lang, ah, wala kadawat sa pension na, ato si himo buffer, no, kay, mahimo man siya, kung, mapwede man siya, kung gusto, kung hatagan o prioridad, kung butangan o budget, kay, una-una, if we are to approve this by January, kasi can't really man ta, or karoon, una-una, there is a one month, uh, for review dito sa sanggunian, pantalumigan, before this can be fully implemented, diba? So, mahimo maguna siyang, mabilin na to, kay.
There's no problem with that, Mr. Chair, you know, what I'm trying to say, say, just earlier, earlier on, is if lang nila, nga ko'y, hatta information kung maproo nga poon, approve.
Um, di paunta, yes, di paunta na magulis, asa ko onong budget, that's why I'm telling.
But it can do, it's a fundamental budget, no?
Exactly, kay, ang point of ginihan, honorable, in perio, asa ko on karoon ng budget nga karoon December na, and they are expecting, that's why again, explain ako, nadili niya sa, isang approval nga rin karoon, di ini siya nakinahangyan tayo po ang budget, basta-basta, pwede man na ko siya sa next year, muna ako gusto'y point out, I am also looking for ways nga kung asa na to may pwede, mas ma-implement, o matagal ng pagtagal, even if we approve this.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, we can control it by amendment, amendment, some provision here that the effectiveness of this ordinance may be the next twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, if the budget officer will, as long as the, the, they will be waiting for some, something, yeah, naaano't iwa to, no, no? So, paunta, magalit tao, magload tao, palit na tao, mga, mga, what, mga for a comfort sa nakalbo ng inangibay.
Exactly, wala ko sa ting priority, sa, sa ting priority, sa ato ang.
So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Once this ordinance is approved, it will, this is already a final, uh, event, it is that this, uh, there is a final review of the project.
That is for Mr. Chair.
This ordinance approved by local, by, just immediately, it will.
Except.
Before the effectiveness of, uh, during, where in, no, I will have the similar of financial security, and, just like the, the salaries for the, uh, local, economic and debt rights, see, already, the salaries, the wages, the economic, it's before, it was secured by the San William, so what San William did, after finding that it's illegal, that they were receiving, uh, salaries and wages before it was approved, what did it is though? And I can, it's a solution, because it's been advising, because, not, not to continue releasing, uh, salaries, wages of, the employees of the local, and it's a time that the pressure is also, but they were not paid, they were not asked to reinforce, just like the ordinances in the barangay, immediately after they are approved, they will, they will, they will be, be required by San William, because whatever finding it will have, maybe only just pass a resolution, to, to, requested to stop illegal, stop budget.
Honorable Chair.
That is what I am, uh, the, uh, once this is approved, basically approved in the office of the mayor, because this is an ordinance, so, senior citizens who know about this, unless we.
Wait, wait, uh, yes, that's correct. And, and aside from that, Mr. Chair, it's not a provision, it's a subject of, of, of whatever. My question is that, that is my problem, but, nah, si la, nah, si la ma, ma, ma. That is why, yes, Mr. Chair, that is why I'm asking the body, of your proposal, how we can be able to, uh, uh, meet on the medal, when it's, when it's special when it comes to the issue of, of funds, so, if we can, if, if the body would suggest that, we will indicate here, it has a provision, a subject of, of funds, so for that, we can agree that next, uh, budget theory, and next proposed, uh, budget, uh, budget, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, including, uh, we know this, inappropriate budget for a twenty-three, and that is not included, so, ang ako is, you have to be certain person, not a budget for any, kay, the moment iya approved na to ni, dayos, pag-put sa script level, wala ba produce budget, ang madaw niya script level, diba? Bubirang siya. Subject to, subject, kalaoki, pagwanan.
Honorable Chair.
The moment, the moment niya iya approved na to ni, then, pag-put dito sa ilaha, dili po budget, then, sila may madaw.
Yes, Mr. Chair, di mo na kubina, nga, na kay provision, so if that, if that is a form of, uh, uh, a, a, amendment, so, if we, if we indicate subject to available to funds.
Yes, mo bitol ako point out.
And.
I still, I still have the law.
Future, yeah, mo budget, a proposal, na my presentation.
Yes, girecognize na ko, the honorable vice mayor, yes. Uh, mo bitol to inon ko, i-point out, and a safety, na may safety clause, kung kalusa, we're not, wala ka na nag, nag against any, ang ato ala, kalusan na tuhan ay ma-implementar, kay, diri't tatanan gusto nga maipit, gustong tangahan ay karugon, no, so, even if pa-put na any, kung na, mabutang safety clause, for, sa, uh, maad, ano, no, direct to ordinance, as I amend meant to that, then that would be nice, if at mo, may, ay, isang matatumbo, paunsa na to nga, ma-approve ni, at the same time, may implement nga han, ay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, uh, to answer the, the manifestation of the honorable Columbia, somehow, we can also amend this provision, uh, including the activity clause, para safe ang tanan, but, uh, and I am willing more than, I am willing, no, to, to, to amend if there are suggestions for amendment, I'm willing just to, willing, uh, give everything for this ordinance, Mr. Chair.
Okay, more discussion?
So, I see, I see, you want the approval. Okay, funds na to, two, twenty, twenty-two, sato pa, okay, patat, twenty, twenty-three, din, okay. There, there, there will be a limitation.
So, you can always just if I'm saying, uh, the subject of it, so.
Anyway, anyway, dili mantanang senior citizen ma birthday for, kada, sa, sa, so, 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 may lang, inhanglanga to nga funding for the, those who are only. We have produced the four million, two million.
Kila pa ko, senior citizens karoon?
Two hundred.
Two thousand.
Two hundred.
Eight thousand, registered?
Eight thousand, kung birthday na, saka po eh, birthday mo dito eh.
Four million. Funding requirement niyo?
Four, four million.
Four million. Funding requirement. And also, that funding, kung, kung increase kina, kay, magteno ng senior citizen, kung to.
And, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, uh, siguro, apit putat pa consultas sa OAK, alam mo pa siya?
If, if.
Kaya nabi, national governmental, may programa pa sila, basig, basig.
If this has been, uh, adopted and implemented sa CI, another, uh, has to be tied, so, wala ka na problema, because, again, to emphasize, because this is a social, is banking on social system, uh, principle. So, may, Mr. Chair, what are those proposed amendments by our colleagues, Mr. Chair?
The period of the amendments. Any more discussion, the amendments?
I would like to propose an amendment to the, uh, ordinance of the honorable Samuel.
Yes, we are in the amendment period, amendments now. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Honorable Largo.
I would like to propose an amendment by, by sitting in the ordinance, there shouldn't be provision that will say that, uh, subject to the availability, availability of funds. Anyway, kung seventy, twenty-two, and if it's no budget, we will make sure that during the budget preparation on, for twenty, twenty-three, I think this is all.
What do Mr. Chair have to say?
Uh, Mr. Chair, discussion, okay, discussion to the amendment?
If you will put the, one, the provision, subject to availability of funds, uh, where will be the activity done? Because once you, you approve, the date of the activity, una day subject to availability of funds, okay, may activity date, wala yung activity, dito sa wala, it's like madawat.
Can I comment, Mr. Chair? Uh, if the proponent would, uh, also accept my, my counter proposal, can we make it specific that this will be on the day, two thousand thirty-three?
Okay, okay. Twenty-three.
So, budget na tadi dito, balas twenty-three. This will be included, uh, uh, we will just indicate that this will be included in the proposed budget for this sitting year on two thousand thirty-three. So, activity is.
Okay, any more?
Okay, katoan mo ngapit ka, no?
Honorable Chair. Uh, is that a discussion to the amendment proposed by the honorable Largo?
Yeah, I, I am, I am, uh, propose, uh, revision of my amend, amend, ameliorating us, uh, that instead of, uh, playing subject to the availability of funds, ang tao nga siya, may putang sa, to, to, is, two thousand twenty-three.
Honorable Chair, so you're drawing now, your, uh, your eyes?
Because I'm, I'll be proposing, uh, an amendment by addition, I think, since there is already a, a provision that are not subject to the availability of funds.
Wala na, na, withdraw na.
Moraginase yung kinahangga, but, kaso, kaso, subject to the ability, effective, immediately, subject to the ability, atay the ability.
Okay, boy, because we can consult the supplemental budget, Mr. Chair, that's right.
Ina po siya specific, what is, what is twenty, twenty-two, a supplemental budget?
Yeah.
So, the proposal of your motion?
Di na ko masko, di withdraw niya.
Amendment by addition.
So, okay, po siya, wala na, ay, po to.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
You sign up to the motion of the, uh, the. Second, any more discussion to the amendment presented by the honorable. Yes.
Withdraw, I already withdrew it. Withdraw, I already withdrew it.
Withdraw, and then, I knew.
Most amendment to the amendments.
Can one discussion to the amendment presented by the honorable?
No.
Any other motion, is here, okay, any more?
You know what happened? The amendment, two amendments of, uh, two was merged into one. I am subject to availability of funds.
Okay, anymore amendments? Anymore, anymore amendments, okay, no more? Okay, let's go back to the main motion. More discussion? Any objection? You know the motion is here, okay, this version is approved for second reading. We, as amendment was. For third and final reading.
So, what is it, that this ordinance be calendered for the third and final reading during the next session?
Okay, in the second, second, second motion, any objection? So, the demand, the motion is acceptable, this ordinance be calendered for the third and final reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, dear colleagues.
Item C, and ordinance providing for assistance of partnership in local governance between the municipal local government and the people, the municipal people through the peoples.
I hope, Mr. Chair, that this will be reset, uh, for the next regular session.
So that we have a good further study of this matter, uh, thank you, honorable Samuel, for reconsideration, that this, uh, ordinance again be reset and calendered for the next regular session or second reading.
Excited to influence officials and citizens.
Okay, other matter? Okay, uh, can we discuss? Mr. Verdi, that could be now discussed, uh, the proposed.
I have, I have, just before we go to other, what we, just, I have read yesterday, uh, ang ato, ang ato, ang ato, again, recommended for reconsideration, implementation of the mandala, was recommended for reconsideration of the process.
Yes, uh.
Final, though?
Nice, yeah, yeah, final, but, uh, we were there during our vice mayor's state national executive board, honorable, honor, Senator Francis Tlantino, found out, na siya, two words na nakita, na huragito is baang decision sa Supreme Court, ganang, external, 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 juries, basta na siya, yung internal, mga explanation na na, mga wala na kaya pwede, for example, como, sa IP, na butukot tao tulay, mukhang tulay, mismo, magamit po daw sa laing muga, simply, maagi man ang taga TPI, maagi tayo pa masala, na, na return, na, external, external juries, I term, iha judge, niya, ni kuwan niya, siya na kalis kubre, no, na na kaya po, ma, 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 na external, kuwan, ma postas, so, national government, na kaya pwede, so, muna yung nabantayan niya, usap, usap, so, muna siya na, motion for, uh, uh, consideration or review, na, na, nakita niya na, kinalang ba, na, decision sa Supreme Court, iusap sa, like, DBM or something, uh.
I don't think the Supreme Court will pay that, no?
Okay, ang ilahang decision man, to, sa Supreme Court, but may iusap, uh, DBM or kana, external juries.
Sa, sa, DBM sa decision, Supreme Court.
Have you have before? And also, I'm hoping, uh, Mr. Florida to be spaggy.
Ay, kausin yung consideration, uh, upi na to, ang himo ma.
Next.
Oh, kami na, bagyo, dayon, oh, langka.
Upi di ma, or can we have it? Or can we have it on the 27 na after sa 21?
Seven or twenty? Mahal ka na, unikots?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven? Eh, saan niyo, dada na?
Wala me. Your end, different S. Disu na lang, Friday. Karo, maguduan siya niyo. Mayroon ang... Thursday, Friday.
Uka na lang. Uma is experience. Umar saan pa, parang ano dun, diba?
Wala, basta, na, na...
Pero, na, na. Friday, lalak.
Yung gawa.
Napa invitation na yato eh.
Bani.
Uka na, punta mo.
Friday na? Friday. Friday. Thursday, uka na lang, wala pa, mismo lang. Friday, eh, Friday, Lord, yun na?
Tomorrow, Friday.
Friday.
Saturday.
Nargan, Friday? Yung gawa. Pwede na kong Saturday?
Uka ito sa bagyo, ano?
Friday na inuot na mulan ko, dito sa Cebu, nargan na inuot ng Friday.
Friday.
Uka na lang, Friday.
Saturday. Christmas party.
Um, pwede siguro, um, ma?
Di na, sabi, laro lang na pa, mapupuri na pa pa.
Last time?
Last time lang.
Oo, kayo din.
Wala lang, wala.
May na, may shoot lang ba?
Ah, so, I am an invitation siya para Christmas party sa president, in the last time. So, pwede po, after, after, three, la, four, five, six.
Mag snacks lang.
Uma ako, yun ay, na, 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 na.
Na, na, kabis ma?
Di na, 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 di na. Atong matiya, di na.
Siya pwede, ma?
Pasikisaya pa.
Uma. Siguradaman, ito, three years, di ma?
Asa ta?
Di tawasas, di tawasas.
Asa sa?
Asa brand new. Kaya, so, rasa di ko sitong, pag-umang at bayan, ano, sa...
Moga.
Sene, eh. Karo, na, pero, may gawa. Friday.
We are all invited also, SP sa...
Oh, kaya, um, ma?
Speed down ma, asap.
Asa din na siya. Entre na natutukan pa yun sa siya, yung pool, ni ano, ni Hype. No, Friday, no, Friday. Dayon kita rekuwan sa area, sa garden. So, pa. The caterer na siya. Di na, di na, sanito. Di buta, ano, hotel na Victoria City. Oh, para, di, wala na, di buta, diba?